To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Last time we didn't use the mics, so whatever you're comfortable doing.
Well, if you find you're not hearing anything, just give a shout.
Yep.
So, tonight, we're going to continue the first module, which we've got... There's a couple things I'm going to do tonight that are a little different than I often do, part of which is because I think this board gets a lot of the stuff that this module's supposed to kind of help you get, and so I want to hit a few points just to make sure I'm not off-base, but I don't want to over-indulge in this area because I think you'll all go to sleep and I'll feel like a dismal failure. So, we're gonna... But there is one part that I traditionally have left out of the training, although it's part of the White House material, that I decided tonight I am going to use because I think it will become obvious why that may... You may find this could be very helpful. Now, the other thing we talked about the last time was that if we had a little more time at the end, there was some discussion about whether you wanted to talk about some goals or refine your conversation to be more about Greenwich, and I don't know whether that's still something you would like to try to do or not, or do we want to play it by ear and see how we go? Because I'm going to try something new tonight. I'm not sure the time committed to it, and if I find it's failing as a goal, we'll just get rid of it. So, why don't we play it by ear and see how we're going to do? The first thing I want, basically, and I will start every workshop with this slide because it's kind of important to remember where we started. If you remember, the red sticky notes represented the percentage of students you believe were currently succeeding, and the, I think, the blue stickies represent the percentage of children you believe can be successful. And I think it's pretty obvious, we all have a little bit of work to do to get from A to B. But that was actually better than many of the dis... Much of White House work was done with districts that were, let's say, challenged districts, and I know you have challenging students too, but, you know, districts, alliance districts and such, which, you know, did have a larger spread down toward 25 percent or zero. So, you've got your baseline, but you can always do better. Want to start? We're going to talk a little bit about review, just to see what stuck last time, because I'd be curious to see what you remembered. We're going to talk a little bit about what... We talked last time a little bit about what's at stake for students. We're going to continue that conversation for a minute, talk about what's at stake for school boards, and then we're going to get into a little bit of what's possible for students. And hopefully, as we get to the evening, you'll make this an interesting conversation. I don't want to be just stand up here and talk to you, but I want you to help you with this. And I'm looking forward to you keeping me honest on statistics and data, which you always do really well. Thank you. So, anyway, from last meeting, what are some of the takeaways you have from that? I'd like to... I want to make sure that we... Yes.
So, it can be a really wide range of abilities in a certain grade or a certain age, and I think one of the things that I vividly see was, you know, the board... I don't remember actually, but one student who was really struggling in terms of reading and the realization that that kid, you know, certainly was going to have a really hard time getting the content or reading out of reading because there was so much work going into just reading, and another student clearly was much more fluent in that.
Yeah, we had Will and Keisha were the two struggling readers, and yes, it tugs at your heart rate a little bit when you see them get to work this so hard. Other comments? The hardest thing as a facilitator is not to jump in and keep moving things too fast, but gives you time to get talking. I need to do that. Okay, going once, going twice. We're not going to be like this all night. Please talk. Please do. Anyway, so, for school boards, what's at stake if nothing happens? Now, if you have been your back it from last time, there's a pink sheet that says, "What's at stake for local governments?" So, what we'd like you to do is pair up with the person sitting next to you, take a look at this document, and make some notes. This is a point, basically, think about which of the passages most closely identifies with your experience as a board member. I think once you start reading them, you can understand and say, "Spin to these," and not to say that you should identify with these necessarily, but I know there's been some issues in the past where people may have challenged them, so take a few minutes to read these and...
So, do you want us to identify what's the most realistic in our town?
Yeah, what do you identify with the most? Which one says this is closest to where we are or what we've been through?
From what says recent published quotes down, or what? Which ones?
Any of... Anyone from the page, but look through and see which ones might reflect how you feel about your district. The three pages, yes, all the pages. I think it's slow, we can still speed it up with everybody's way to read it, but I You said your question, you're firmly in what's on that board. So, what was it you really wanted? Well, I'd like you to see if there's any statements that particularly identify with you or your board, or I want to start a general conversation about these, or my team. You want your answers. So...
The one that rings true for me is on the last page, and it's the one at the middle, "Leading in Difficult Times: Our Urban School Board Up to the Task." I think in Connecticut, we have so many case studies of them not being up to the task. In Bridgeport's prime example. I think mayoral control of local districts has come up in New Haven and other places, and there's no easy solution. Sometimes a state takeover makes a lot of sense until certain leadership changes, and that can be turned back over to the elected board. So, I think it is appropriate in certain circumstances, but that's where most of the criticism is in our state setting, urban level.
Other comments?
Well, I took this time at a little bit of trouble because I thought we were supposed to be thinking about sort of what are the community, or what are the things we hear like in our papers or other people are saying about us? And one of the first things I would say is, I think there's a lot of people out there who don't have any idea what we do, who don't think about us, who don't know about us, who don't care about us, even, you know, parents have kids in schools, those kinds of things. And then I would say there's like pieces of different ones that I think could be applied to it, but I don't feel like there's any one that particularly matches things.
Or their perception of what your job is different from the other.
Right, yeah, certainly not a big one.
Sure.
That's exactly what we were... There's pieces here that we can identify with as part of being on the credit sheet of the school board. No one sent it, and we talked to you about like the misunderstanding of policy, like governance versus management.
I think there is a tension between sort of representing sort of what the community wants, they're trying to do that, and not being the people who actually carry many of those things out, but it's not really a pro test as a work ethic test, and how you sort of play both those roles appropriately.
Not to mention that the board has a very different status as a government agency than many others, because your primary responsibility is to uphold the state's interest in public schools, so, which is why it can be a state takeover, or an assignment of a special master, or receiver, or takeovers or whatever, because they are... Your measures against a different set of, a different rubric than a municipal agency, like, for example.
Maybe because Laurie and I are finance people, we felt we had to pick one section, and so we didn't realize that we could take from others, and so we narrowed, and we also didn't think of anything specifically applied, but we could take it abstract, a little bit of an abstract. The one about school boards fighting for their survival, but versus the town government. So, we talked about increasing regulations at city councils, state boards, we've had state legislatures, or state federal courts. I'm not talking about the state stuff, but more within our town. So, legislature, you know, and I guess the city council would be the most RTM things like that. And then also talked about the politics that surround them in the second paragraph. So, we took that in a little bit long, because Laurie probably feels it more than me, but I actually did suggest it.
Just to fill up what Kathy had said, those are roles and responsibilities, the chair. Right, we've got a first selectman, body of selectmen who have a view as to what their remit is. We have a board vested in taxation, finance board, through controlling purse strings, they have a view of the world. And then we have a representative town meeting, which includes a education committee, but not as powerful as the finance committee, budget overview committee, labor contracts committee, all of those are stakeholders, like play a different role from what the board then plays, and yet they play in our sandbox too. They want more. They want more singing. So, if you, as you think about Greenwich, and I remember it, what was it, about five, six years ago, they were talking about changing your charter, change whether appointed or elected, or term limits, or I know there was a lot of conversation. My assumption is, maybe it's incorrect, that the people involved in that at that time were doing it because they were dissatisfied with something and thought this might not fix it. Is that inaccurate, or is that make... And not necessarily the current board, but at that time?
No, I think that's inaccurate. I think it was more political.
Okay.
Actually, it was, but that's okay.
We have different views. Okay, all right, well, I guess the way, the reason I bring that up is because if knowledge of this, of you perform in a different way to offset some of these types of feelings amongst people, then I think that would be helpful. And that's why it's interesting to have these conversations, to kind of talk about, back to, one of the things I always say to boards is, "Don't try looking for solutions." See if you figured out what the problem is. You know, is there an issue that Greenwich faces when it comes to supporting the community or not? And if so, what might be some of the things we would want to talk about to better define what that problem is? Notice I didn't say figure out how to fix it yet, but how do we better define what that issue is, which could then lead to something in the way of a better solution?
So, I think the issue in Greenwich is superintendent turnover. You asked me for one, there are others, but that's primary.
That's it. This is pregnant pause. So, well, actually, this could lead into, it's a slide, actually. I'm going to hand out another document. Actually, I'll get that one. Take one, pass around, take one, pass around. Now, about a week ago, I was on Facebook, and a friend of mine who teaches first responders, particularly firefighters, at the college level, was at a conference somewhere around the country, and she posted a PowerPoint slide, and the title of the PowerPoint slide was "Authentic Leadership." And one of the bullet points just hit me over the head and said, "Wow." You know, it's just one of those moments where I said, "That seems like it's really important." And it said something to the effect of, "If you have no credibility of leadership, it can't work." And I started thinking about the term credibility of leadership, and immediately did a Google search, and you would not be, you'd be amazed at how much research there is on that term, credibility of leadership, and in fact, it's a major part of effective leadership is having credibility. If you think about it, how do we, even if we make great decisions, but if we don't communicate them, well, if our community doesn't trust us, we're not going to get things implemented. And so, I found this article, and it's in this article, but I'd like you to just, again, take a couple minutes just to start a conversation. Take a couple minutes and read through it, and again, try to think about how this might apply to Greenwich or not, in terms of either how it relates to the way you work, or what Again, I'm going to bring this back to, bring this back in. Again, this is the first time I'm doing this, so bear with me, but I think it is relevant to what you're doing. When you look at this, how do you think, and again, knowing this business versus public service, what are your observations? What are your comments? Good or bad? Is this a way to ponder this conversation? Is there something we can mark, or just... And you look like you want to say something.
It's about developing relationships and the trust between the various players, and if we don't trust one another, and we can't trust one another, then you're not going very far, so... And you have to be willing to take those risks and make the state, you say, make the state, but relationships are...
That is to build a lot of life holes, but we got it right along the side.
I think lead by example is the best for Greenwich in this list. I think consistency of service on the board shows longevity, shows your willingness to be part of an organization. How you lead and how you expect others to lead is what the board should be modeling, and I think our behavior is critical, absolutely critical. If we want to hold others accountable, then we have to have appropriate behavior.
Good.
Yeah, I mean, I guess this is like, that's a little bit of a little apple pie thing. I was like, I mean, if you don't have trust or something, and I do work in business, and I will say to people I trust, I continue to work with, and those that I don't, I don't. So, pretty black point.
In my other life, I'm reading a thing called CQI, or Continuous Quality Improvement, which is a hospital based over in Alameda, for our office, and a lot of these points are very similar in terms of how do you manage, how do you improve the quality of care, and shows excellence in the organization, and it's very similar ideas.
It's amazing how whatever type of organization, if they're a high flyer, if they're a successful operation of any kind, this is usually instrumental in getting there. Any other comments? Now, what I should have done, and I'm going to ask now, because we've had an idea about something, and I want to come back to this in a minute, but the other thing that I should have asked you when we talked about the what's possible for boards, or what happens if nothing changes, talk about what you think about school boards. In other words, "Yeah, I agree with this, yeah, we shouldn't be here," or "No, I believe in school boards because..." Give me some of your observations about, you know, why are you here? You have hundreds of opportunities every day. I mean, if you did nothing but stay home and watch TV, you have a thousand channels to compete from. You have so many things contributing, you know, competing for your time, and then you're doing this because it's important, so, you know, why? Now, what is it about the board that compels you to do this hard work? What is it about board work that you think helps public schools, help me draw the relationship? What's the argument when someone can answer these and says, "Look at this, look how horrible things are"? What do you have to, how do you respond to it? How do you respond? Okay, but I'm really interested in what you have to say, so I hope you're well. Thank you. Thank you. Yes?
I'm not sure. You know, I think I have a question sometimes about, do we really make a difference? I think that tool system, I'm very invested in doing this, but I sometimes wonder if we knock it up, and whether we help. But I think in theory, a good board can help take the vision of the community, is kind of think about where should our schools go, and how do we get the leadership, and how do we get the direction and help focus to get there? And I think that's an important role that, you know, just, I don't know who would hire a superintendent if there wasn't a board, but I still think it's an important partnership to work on getting there.
Which also begs the question, something a couple of you referenced earlier, you've gone through a lot of superintendents. And if you want credibility of leadership, you also have to have a superintendent with that same credibility of leadership. So, how do you develop within yourself a structure that supports and retains a superintendent, and then works together to create that harmony, I guess? You know, a lot of people, "Oh, I don't have to like that person, but I know I have to work with him." That's sometimes hard to do, but you definitely, if you like someone or don't like them, you still have to trust them. still have to trust them. Do you know the TV show Mythbusters? The show where these two scientists, you know, or they actually were stumped in and did a lot of effects things, but they would get all these crazy ideas and test them to bust myths, and they were on 18 seasons. Eighteen seasons. Did you know they didn't like each other? They didn't like each other, they couldn't stand each other. But they had a shared focus, a shared goal, they agreed on the work that had to be done, and they just, at the end of the day, they went their separate ways, and they wouldn't dine together, and they wouldn't talk together, and they just, they did not have a relationship. But they made it work, because they were focused on the work, and they agreed on what that was. So I think somewhere there's a glimmer of, and that's part of what Lighthouse is about. How do we get, so that, specifically to answer your question, what Lighthouse research shows is, if boards do certain things, they do have a profound impact on student achievement. And that's what all this is about. Starting with, do we believe we can do it? Then start to generally learn some of the tools we can use to help get there. So hopefully, as time goes on, this will make more sense to people. Other comments, observations?
Well, I don't know who would analyze the data if we didn't have an elected board. You're not going to rely on the public to do it, right? So that's one thing to consider. And I also think that there has to be something in between 9,000 students and the administration. It's just, it's a large district, it's not a small town. I think in a small town, probably the PTA committees could pick up a lot of the work, but we are too big.
And who's, who holds them accountable? Because you are elected officials, where someone in a PTA or PTO might just be self-selected. I'm going to join, I'm, maybe I will work up to a leadership role, but I still participate in that as a volunteer without any benefit, in essence, so.
Good.
That, I self-
Do you want to repeat what you were saying?
Okay, well, I'm going to, I'll have to paraphrase it, because I can't repeat it exactly. But basically, if you're a member of the PTO, you're self-selecting. You have decided to join, and the organization as a group may elect you to have a position of authority within it.
So a small group elects, decides who that is?
I believe in most cases that the chairman or president of the local PTO is chosen by the membership.
So what's wrong with that?
There's no accountability.
Why is there no accountability?
The broader community has no say over who self-selects to join the PTA and the decisions made about. You are an elected organization, at least theoretically, the people in this community can say, you have not represented the interests as we see, as we see them, or as we believe in them, and we want to have, you'd like me to leave and someone else come and take the place.
So in that model you're envisioning, you're saying, just because they were selected by a PTA as an example, they don't-
What?
Represent the wider community?
They don't necessarily represent, but there's no, there's no mechanism for ensuring any of it.
Okay.
And I've had good friends who were president, in fact, one of my colleagues on the school board was actually president of two PTOs at the same exact time. We sometimes wondered where his loyalty was, because he was always like, either representing the needs of the particular school. That's a whole other discussion, but that does come up from time to time, where a PTO president gets on the board again, and then there's a question about where do the royalties lie? But in this sense, because you are part of a legally created body, legislative-created body, with specific legislative instructions, for lack of a better term, direction, there's a measurement of accountability, and in fact, there's quite a bit, because whether the good people of Greenwich decide you aren't doing the job or not, the commissioner of education, or the state board of education, or the legislature can say, you are not meeting the educational interests of the state, and we are going to intercede. And they do. Not all the time, but they do. And even on the lower level, even if it isn't a matter of, we're going to take your authority away, such a lot of us, I'm sure, gets calls from the state department periodically, we need to see this, we need to see that, et cetera, et cetera. So there's this constant, even though they're running at, I think, about 30 or 40% fewer people than they have been for the last few years. So they're having trouble holding people accountable, because there's fewer people to do. So, anything else about boards and that? I mean, if your neighbor says, why would we even have a board? Why? Why would we even have a board?
You've already written down the word governance, but-
Yep.
But basically, a board serves as a force function for the superintendent and through them the administration. Are they doing the things that we need them to do? Are they hiring leadership? Are they following the policies? Right? Do we have the resources we need in the right places? And so the board has the responsibility of, at the top, making sure that happens, and also pushing and prodding and driving along some time, or in other words, partnering. Also bringing in ideas from the outside, right? Some of us who are in the educational system, others come from varied backgrounds, strategic planning, HR, medicine, business, marketing. Everybody brings a different skill set, and by being on the board, you share that with the administration, sharing things that happen in the outside world, the leadership articles, or a different way of thinking about things. And that, I think, helps the conversation where educators are going down a path, they don't always see what's happening outside. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, depending on their worldview and experience, but I think the board is a way to bring that to bear in mind.
One last thing. I think school boards are essential in telling the legislature the impact of their mandates on our districts. And without an elected board, I don't think people like Ralph and his administrators would have the time to drive up to Hartford two hours, back from Hartford two hours, and still get their work done. So someone has to do it.
That's an incredibly valuable asset to the education world, is having board members able to do that. And even if it's, I gave that to Hartford, probably can draft a letter. I think Ellington last week drafted proposed legislation, and they submitted that. So there's ways of taking that leadership role, the most effective is having that voice, you know, if you're, if you're local legislator, then let's go get a couple of coffee, let's talk. But those relationships, somebody mentioned that one before, too. The relationships we develop are really, really important, and can be leveraged to do really good work. I was at a workshop last week, it was a bunch of tech directors, and we were talking about policies related to using technology in schools, and we got on this whole endless cycle of legislation coming and going, and everything's topsy-turvy every year, and I hope I won't bother anybody with this, but I said, you know, every time the legislature reads, an angel dies. You know, thinking back to the, it's a wonderful life comment. You know, it's just, they, with the best of intentions sometimes, if they don't hear what the local repercussions are, that law of unintended consequences wreaks havoc. And it really does every year. So it's important. And it's important to work with your superintendent to say, what's the data look like here? How are we going to, how do you interpret what's going to happen when it gets into the classroom, or if it's something to do with discipline? How does that actually influence, or attendants? I mean, that's, as I say, it has lots of influence, everything. And it's really hard to understand the interrelationship between some of these, where sometimes they actually contradict each other. Okay, you kind of beat that one. So, going back to credibility for a minute, because I just would like to walk away with maybe a sense of where you think you are as a board when it comes to credibility of leadership? And let's think about how your commuting and you, your staff, I mean, if this board creates a directive that says we need to change the way we teach reading, for example, or we want to do some more work on the new science standards, when this board makes decisions, is there credibility throughout the district? Do teachers go, well, thought up, let's do it, or, okay, they go again? You know, because that credibility works amongst yourselves, you have to have it with each other, but you also have to have it with your staff, and you have to have it with the public at large. Where do you think you might be?
It all depends upon who the messenger is.
Okay, elaborate a little bit on that.
Well, who's delivering the message to the teachers?
Uh huh.
And how is it being delivered? Because if it's, there they go again, they want you to do this, well, you're dead in the water. What if they go, well, you know, let's try this, it's a good idea, blah, 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 you know? So the messenger is important.
Yes, well, I mean, I want to explore that, because a lot of this gets, we will be continuing this conversation as we go through this training. Is it the messenger, or is it the message?
It's, it's-
I, I bet, no.
No, because I thought about it, I said, message, yes. It's both, though. What is the message, and how is it being delivered?
Yeah, in our next session, we're going to start to actually look at the Lighthouse research. They determined that there are seven conditions that exist in high-achieving school districts. That's really going to be a lot of the meat of what we're going to be exploring as we go through this training. And a lot of it gets to messaging, communication, unified vision. And we can't communicate a vision if we're not even sure what it is. So how do we get to all that?
So that's why we have a strategic plan.
Good.
And the only thing that we need to do is get those metrics done, in every category that we set up. Because without that, there isn't the credibility in the community, or with the teachers, or with the parents. So I think that's a task that has to get done, this at the beginning.
A good strategic plan goes along like, if the board embraces it and really works it, the district, I mean, but everybody, but a lot of times, it becomes a staff that plans. Staff that they, they're, you plan, work, you know, when you're doing. But if it becomes your work, too, then you have much greater impact on what happens. But yes, something that's very important.
It was our work, and then that committee got disbanded.
Sorry, can you hear that?
It was our work, and then the committee got disbanded.
Perhaps it might be something you want to think about again at some point, or is it something that the board needs to do more collectively as a group? Do you want to have more discussions about where we're going? I mean, I did take a look at your vision of the graduate for the committee, and see that, of course, you can substitute and say, vision of a good school board number two, because everything on there is phenomenal, and it's good citizenship, it's good work at, I mean, it's really what makes a good person, a vision of a good person, good citizen, but it, I mean, if you can do that, and align it to your strategic plan, why not be successful?
I'm going to, I'm always the, I'm known as the contrarian, you don't do that?
I don't do that.
Okay. I have a lot of experience with transforming organizations, moving from one place to another place, transformations are hard.
Yes.
I would venture to say that all of the people sitting in this room, and I'm not, they will, of course, see what I'm about to say is demeaning their work, but it's not demeaning their work. We have a great school system, despite everyone who's sitting in this room. Okay? We just, organizationally, we don't really have our crap together, and the organization has learned, it has built up a complete shield mechanism, particularly, not so much because of changing boards, but the board was accountable for changing superintendents, and superintendents have changed. So the organization has learned, the organization runs despite us, and it runs really well despite us, which is a testament to the strength, manage effectiveness, four-to-two teamwork, transparency, trust of the staff below everybody who's sitting in this room. That's the hardest issue for everybody in this room to face, and we have not been successful over a long period of time of being self-reflective about that, self-aware about that. And again, now there's some new players here, but there's also some players who've been here long enough, that we should have figured it out, but we haven't. So if you want to work on something, that would be great, if this project could somehow move us incrementally forward. But answering the question, you know, what happened here? I would venture to say that the organization runs really, really well, and it educates kids beautifully. Sometimes we're more in the way than helping make that happen.
Yes?
Well, just so you don't get a one-sided view, the school improvement plans in every building are directly tied to the strategic plan. And I can show you the documents if you want to look at them. I mean, it's black and white, it's not something that can be refuted, it's there. So we just need to get our metrics for moving the entire district forward.
The strategic plan is meant so that it's not person-specific, it basically is task-specific, right? If the, if the district is moving all in the same direction, we're going to have growth regardless of who's sitting in any given seat at any table at any time. We have an opportunity, and our strategic plan basically is a year, four, five-year plan. That's why the timing of this is actually kind of important to us, in that the idea is, in the next year, we are going to need to kick off, probably starting at the beginning of the school year, a, look, are these the right things? We, what we lacked in originally were smart balls. How are they timed out? Who's in charge? Right? We have learned, I think, from the past four years, and if we're doing anything right, we're paying attention to that, and as we refresh the plan, review the plan, whatever we want to call it, all of this needs to come in there, and that otherwise, we're just spinning our wheels in the words on a page, or a binder on a shelf, and it's useless.
And there's a lot of those in the state. Nope, drop the work.
Okay, I was actually going to give this as a little update at our next public meeting, but I think some of the great work that we were talking about recently at the curriculum council that ties back to this, is the vision of the graduate, those capacities, really is actually connected completely to our strategic plan, and there was a lot of discussion about how do we take that, which was a lot of work has been done at the high school, and bring that back, so it's really being started at the beginning, and all leading to that same goal, and reinforcing that message, and how do we bring that into all of those levels, where there's a real good focus in that direction. So I think, you know, that is something that I think is going really well. And I think as well as what you're saying, as, you know, being on the policy committee, one of the things that we're sort of looking at as we're shifting our policies is, we're leaving it, it seems like for last, but the question of, you know, do we redo the values, the mission, the goals? And I think, to me, that ties into the whole concept of the strategic plan, so I feel like it's going to be a really good client for us to take what we have learned, hopefully help to focus us, to help us be that entity that helps to move things in the right direction and do that. And so I think, to me, and one of the reasons I really wanted to do Lighthouse, was to help us become that group that works together for that unity to achieve those things.
Our final session, at least that's, I envision it, is to talk directly about how what you learn will affect policy, which theoretically will affect, I think, and results. So that is part of the end game, is, okay, you learned all this good stuff, so what, well, how do we apply it to, in a way that would, not just today, not just for this plan, but in essence, creating a new culture, so that we're not here, two elections, we're not alone, with people saying, well, we got to start all over again.
Well, but it, see, it depends on what your expectation is of progress, right? I mean, you just heard something that maybe in school boards isn't alarming, in the rest of the world is very alarming. If you were to say to somebody, I have a strategic plan, okay? You'd want to know what's in the strategic plan, because is it a strategic vision, or is it actually a plan for execution? Let's take it, assume for a moment it's a plan for execution. And you just heard something. It's four years old, it doesn't have metrics to it, okay? And I bet if you went out and surveyed people who are doing work every single day, the interesting thing is, most of them will talk about this, they won't talk about, the words will not come flying out of their mouth, strategic plan, the words that'll come flying out of their mouth, a vision of the graduate, okay? And the other thing you would find out, I think you would find out, is, you know, to have that period of time, and not have this stuff nailed down, buttoned down, all wars rolling in the same direction, to me, that's alarming. But to others, I have learned, you know, everyone said it was just in education, that timeframe's okay. But I think about that, you asked me what gets me going, what gets us going? I think about that, and I think, wow, that's four years in a kid, four years, thousands- I think about that, and I think, wow, that's four years in a kid, four years, thousands of kids. Now, it doesn't mean they're not getting educated, but...
You yourself said you've got a great education system.
And your question was, what is it we in this room, and I reuse the word, I don't use the board. I mean, the board and the top executives of the top administrators. And it doesn't mean we're not doing work all the time. We meet, we talk, we do stuff, we review stuff, we have sessions, we look at data, you know, all the rest of this stuff. And everybody does it. But I just look at that, and I just go, wow, how much more effective could we be?
Well, maybe I have some answers to that.
Because it's interesting, Gaitan made that last point, Gaitan's talking about policies. And if I, I have a kid in the school system, so there's some people that have kids in the school system, some we don't, okay? But I will tell you, every time I interact with the school system, I'm thinking, and one of the things that's always flashing through my head is, is what's happening with my kid, and I have kids at different levels, actually line up to when a curriculum, Irene came in and told us something about curriculum. Is that actually happening on the ground with my child, okay? Or I run into the high school and we talk about assessments, and we've heard from someone about assessments. And we'll talk about something that's happening in the buildings in the middle school. And frequently, it's connected, but I'm always surprised the number of times it's disconnected. And the number of times I'll then say to, I won't say it usually to a teacher, I may wind up saying it to an administrator in the building. So, I'm kind of surprised because that doesn't seem to line up to what the board's policy is. I frequently get a glazed look, which is they don't even know what that policy is. So, I don't view that as bad. What I do view it as is, somebody spent all this time on policy, and it didn't get out of this room or it didn't get out of this building. So, then I'm looking at the work that I'm doing, I'm thinking, wow, I'm spinning my wheels.
Well, I think it's a legitimate question as, as policy work is done. Part of the question has to be, how is this being distributed out to the district? How are we ensuring that it is being done the way it was written, the way it was expected? I think that's a fair assumption for board members to have, that we do all this work on policy and we're going to assume that it's implemented with fidelity. Now, the question is, how do we know or not? And I think that may be something that the board needs to explore as they move along a little further. I will say that a lot of what we'll talk about in the next session, perhaps the next two, is really going to get to the meat about what you can do as a board to make a difference if, in fact, you feel we could do more. Because it's, part of it's almost a roadmap on if you do this stuff. You will, just by the way you change thinking, some of your decisions will impact what happens going down the road. I read an interesting article today, a friend of mine who's been doing Lighthouse training for about 15 years, has been working with the district in Oregon for most of that time. And they've had, I think in the past 10 years, they've had three superintendents. I think the board has turned over several times. But the culture that developed by the work they did in Lighthouse has sustained. Because as people came on, part of what they got was, this is how we do business now. So, part of your job while you're here will be what works will do, what residents will do. How do we make sure it becomes part of our daily business so that as people come and go, people are going to understand, okay, if we want to do this, or if the board's thinking of that, here's the process we use, here are the questions we ask, here are the expectations we have. And you'll come a lot, you go a lot farther toward making that, to answering that question better. Do we make a difference? Do we make a big difference? Because I do, I wouldn't be doing what I've done for the last 25 years if I didn't believe boards made a difference. And so, I think, you know, and again, you're starting with good stuff. So, it's not like you have to change everything. I've worked with, in Lighthouse, I've done probably 18, 15, 18 alliance districts. And they're starting in a much different place than you are. And they, and a couple of them have really made progress. I love working with the Waterbury Board, they're right in the middle of Fortune graduate. They are doing some incredible stuff with planning and aligning resources. And they've got some interesting municipal issues that they have to deal with. You know, the city pays their bills. And if the city says, "We want to pay that," there's always a brawl. So, there's a huge difference in the mechanics of how they do the work. But the board is really focusing. And we've spent time, and we can do that here too, is, how do you do your meetings? What do you spend your time on? After we've talked about this, you're going to have a think about what we should be talking about. Well, how do we let go of some stuff and focus our meetings better? That's for another time. And I don't want to jump ahead too far. And I kind of, maybe I sidetracked this a bit, but I don't think it hurts for you to get a sense of where we're going. Because I don't, if you have questions, why are we doing this or what's going to happen? I hope this is helping to answer some of that a little bit. I think it's worth spending a few minutes to do that. So, I'm getting a sense that you're not going to go home and write your letter of resignation that you're, you know, "I'm ready to commit to continuing this work." It's still a lot of energy. I mean, it's not like it's, "Oh, I hate this job." It's uplifting work, it really is. You can be frustrated because we want to do more, we want to go faster. We don't want to go through that traditional slow, super tanker pace, you know? But it's the way it is. But what we can do is refine how we do our work to spend more time doing the right stuff and hopefully make things happen quicker, more importantly, happen better and more sustained. Because one of the things you want to try to do is also create initiatives that will outlast the next superintendent or the next board event. Because too often what happens is you get a new leader in, and all this break that strategic plan you have, and a new person could come in and say, "This one's really not that good, let's do a new one." And then, three years from now, four years from now, someone else comes, "Oh, we can do a new one." Well, if a lot of good work went into creating it, you could certainly do a lot of good work to refine it or move it forward, but do you have to? Most of the time, the things you wanted to do, something like that Fortune graduate, isn't going to change dramatically from year to year. Because what we need to do doesn't change that much, but how we intend to do it could. And so, how do we create a culture that focuses more on what we're trying to do?
And how do we measure that we did it?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
We've had a new superintendent for every year of implementation of the strategic plan. So, us around the table have been keeping the work going despite who's been sitting in that chair. And we're all committed to that work. So, yes, the vision of the graduate is one of the sticky messages, along with making learning personal. But there is a challenge when you have a new superintendent for every year of implementation.
Continuity of leadership, whether it's board members, whether it's superintendent, whether it's principals, is critical.
Because it's open to their interpretation as much as we coach and give the historical perspective. I guess that work's going.
I'm going to describe one more thing, honey. Because we've talked about credibility and leadership and all that. The word, a word that came up a lot tonight is the word "trust." And I'm just going to write one more thing up here. You can probably guess that working with boards, you know, when you write words on flip charts, the two words that come on here more than ever are communications and trust. Two words that always get written on the flip chart. And in trust, because it's so important and because it seems to be a sticking point with a lot of boards, I started reading a lot of books on trust, and there are a lot of really bad ones out there. There's a couple of good ones. But one of the things that I sort of pulled together from all this is what I call a trust equation. Let me sort of, I can write this out, and then I'll explain it. Oversimple, perhaps. But if we have a clearly defined vision, whether it's our strategic plan, but not just clearly defined, but universally agreed upon. In other words, if one of us says, "We want to improve reading," you can all articulate together what that means. You know, so it's not just, yeah, we want to get better, or yeah, we want to have better readers or do better in problem-solving, but we can articulate what the expectation actually is. So, there's a clearly defined vision. If there's an articulate plan that everyone agrees to, and that would be developed by the administration and staff, but if there's a vision, if there's a plan, and particularly if there's results, we should have trust. If we have these three things, we have trust. Now, if we don't have trust, I kind of flip it back and say, what's missing? What don't we have that's causing this chaos or this trouble in trust? Most often, it's the vision. We don't all agree on what we're trying to do. Back to, we're trying to solve a problem, but we don't agree what the problem is. It's really hard to pick a solution when you're doing that. So, if we spend enough time articulating that through the portrait, or the vision of a graduate, if it's the strategic plan, but we spend time really getting into the language so that when we pass it and when it's implemented, it is our work. It isn't just Ralph's work or the administration's work and the district's work, this is our work. Now, I get a sense that's how you feel about it, I sense a lot of ownership in that. But that has to happen for this to really, to work well. So, that really accounts for vision and plan. Part of the results, and Jennifer, you mentioned this a couple times, a couple of you have, the idea of data. So, it's not just a question of, we know what we want and we know how to do it. Do we agree on what we're looking for for results? Do we agree on what success means? And so, we have, that has to be part of that conversation. Because if your idea of success is, you know, doing really well on Sbat, and yours is, nope, there's a special reading test that, you know, the dibbles or one of the other tests, that's the one that we need to focus on, we're going to have a little bit of chaos because we'll be teaching the one and the other, one of us isn't going to be happy. So, we have to, as part of our process, agree what the results are that we're looking for. And, you know, with most of these curriculum programs, they can predict what the results should be if we do it with fidelity. That's the most important word to pick up on tonight, fidelity. Because you can have really great curriculum, you can have really great teachers, but if the teachers are not delivering curriculum with fidelity, we don't, we can't guarantee this. So, I just want you to think about this as we go about our work. And when we hit a stumbling block, or as we're doing our work as we go along, we will be talking about vision, we will be talking about planning, and we will be talking about results and data. Let's sort of keep in mind that there's this, there's an equation. There's components of this that have to work together in order for this to work. Does that make sense? Now, I'm going to start where I plan to be going tonight. We talked about the Forbes article. So, this, and we don't need to spend a lot of time on this. In fact, I debated whether we needed to do this at all, but I think we want to spend a few minutes so that we put this in perspective. You're going to see a little packet called, "What's Possible, What's Possible." "What's Possible to Expect," looks like this, the packet. Now, what I want you to do is, as you sort of, and this is a new one. We had one that, which Lighthouse did earlier, it was getting on about 20 years old. I thought it was kind of, still doing with data. Which is still, some of it's still a little bit on the old side, but it's good stuff. Take a look at this document, and then as you're looking through it, and maybe just take one or two sections. You don't have to do the whole thing if you don't want. Anything that's particularly interesting to you, mark with an asterisk. And anything that sort of challenges your beliefs, you're, "Yeah, this doesn't seem to make sense to me," or "I'm not really sure," you know, put a hashtag or a comment sign or whatever you want to call it. But let's just see if you can find any consistency in some of the things you see. Don't know where she...
The sheriff?
Yeah. Park is in front of me. I keep him out of here.
Don't, don't let it keep the instructions at this point, please, just...
Well, I've done, but it's basically identified things you agree with and things you don't do. Was it that? Was it that? No, but that basically, oh, what happened? Doesn't usually sleep.
Your mousepad sometimes?
Yeah, I've tried that.
If the, if the chocolate was stuck, Michael, if it, um, is it a great quality chocolate?
It never goes. But if it's bad... So, observations. What did you see in agreement or not?
I have exclamation points, does that fit what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay. Number four, I thought it was amazing that they had a position paper outlining crowd work for reaching the reading goal, something that they have to done. Not sure what it looks like, not sure how it's implemented, something to explore. Also, I don't know what it was like. "No students experienced failure" was an exclamation point. And also, "No differences between those who did or did not have subsidized lunches."
Had a couple of things obstruct me. One was, number one in this first example, I think. So, the senate established clear, measurable goals, becomes your top priority of the district. But, and number one, use of board meeting time. We spend so much time on so many things that are not our main priorities. And I keep talking about wanting to sort of think about, you know, how do we get to media, I do anyway, you know, media discussions, you know, but I don't, I don't feel like I've got a plan or a way to do that. But I feel like, that's one case where I can see the problem. Feel like I can see the problem, but I don't know how you fix that. But we have so many meetings, we go through so much stuff that's...
So I think that would strike me.
Biggest complaint I get from board members is we don't spend enough time on the right stuff.
Yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I hope that as we spend some time together, we can reach some of that. Waterbury, four nights a week, four weeks a month, roughly, there is a meeting going on. Sometimes it's subcommittee, they have one meeting before their board meeting where they talk about everything they're gonna talk about in their board meeting, and then they go to their board meeting and talk about the same stuff. So they, yeah, and so they, we worked together and we had a conscious effort to, first of all, we have to have the conversation of what's the important stuff to do? What do we need to do, that, what's work only the board can do? Because there's a lot of work that you may be doing that someone else can be doing through institutionalization of it, or just history, or, well, we've always done it that way, we don't wanna change. For whatever reason, that's how we've always done it, doesn't mean that's what we need to do. So part of what we have to work through is, what is the important work of the board? And that might make it easier to let go of some things, because you do have to let go of stuff if you're gonna talk about the important stuff, you just have to. And, do you do field trips here? Probably that's that before.
We actually go to different schools for board meetings, but generally...
What do you mean, do you say field trip?
Do kids do field trips?
What do you mean? What do you mean? The fourth grade class is gonna go to...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. A bunch of them like that.
We don't approve them, they just... Okay, well, but there are boards that will spend meeting time approving field trips.
Only international trips, that's a right thing.
Yeah, okay, and it's legit, but, you know, but there are boards that spend, in fact, New Haven used to have one meeting a month where they, it's a subcommittee, but they approved every field trip. Could you imagine all the field trips they do in New Haven? And they said, we know we shouldn't be doing this. You're right, we shouldn't be doing this. What does your policy set? If your policy tells you what a good field trip looks like, you don't have to vote on it, because you've done it once. And then there's consistency too, because the administrator's gonna look and says, is it part of the educational programming? Does it align with curriculum? All the things that you should have in a good field trip policy, is it, does it add educational value, et cetera, et cetera? You have that argument, you're not gonna argue as much as you will whether the fourth grader should go to Foxwoods, probably the most extreme example, I think, but, you know, it could be simply, but maybe it's a probability class.
Just to explain where we are, I mean, our meetings are taken up by the transition to the Kade policies, that's not gonna be a forever problem, that's gonna go away, and that will free up time on the agendas. The only way, I think, is to create more meetings, because we do have to approve gifts of scoreboards, we do have to approve the school calendar, we do have to approve the MOU with the CARPS and REC, I mean, all of those things are not for student achievement, but they have to get done. And I don't think our agendas are full of fluff. I really disagree with that perception.
I didn't say that.
No, 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 no. We did revisit, we did revisit how we do our board meetings. In the past, we've done in work sessions, basically, repeated, watch, repeat, we did a public meeting that looked a lot like work session. So we have eliminated that. What's in place of those work sessions are sessions like tonight, professional development for the board, or deep dive sessions. Now, the last deep dive session was waylaid by the fact that the state didn't release its achievement data, and, by the way, still hasn't, now a month late, over a month late? Never a month late. Okay, so, but we have alignment, and the idea was to use those sessions to do deeper dives on substantive core areas, and to use them throughout the year so that we would rotate the areas.
But I'd like the cover page to be our, what was it, 12 tiles? And then this month, we're going deep in this one, the next time we're going deep in that one. When's the last time we looked at our 12 tiles, please?
Vernon, I think, was, which was the Lighthouse board, but after they...
We did, because some people, hold on, we didn't, we didn't, because somebody tried to change what we measured. That's, right? So we had meeting, we had one meeting a year, it got rolled into essentially assessment and performance. We were sitting at ISD, that was when that meeting was presented, that was the one time in that year it was presented, okay? And we walked in, right, and it candidly, to Jennifer's point, we walked in, we were like in a parallel universe where for the first time in a year, we had heard that someone was supposed to be supporting the board, the dashboard is the boards, okay, primarily, and the organization's supposed to use it. Someone walked in with a completely different change, there was more stuff on it listed, they changed it. So this isn't only a question of what Jennifer's talking about, right? I can't relate, policies, you could go, thankfully, you have time or meetings, so we can tell. Policies, they take 20 minutes of a board agenda. That, it doesn't take any time. The policy committee does a great job, they present it to the board.
How can you trust us?
Yes. Or, or what I do as a board member is if I didn't do my homework, I don't stop the work of the board, which a lot of people do, which a lot of people on this board respect. If you haven't read something, you don't do it. But this is, that's not our, I disagreed with what Jennifer was saying. I agree with what you're saying. We have to pick the things that matter. We could, we could have it cascade from the top down. If it doesn't support this strategic plan, what the hell are we doing talking about it? Right? But we, if you wanna make the board work more efficient, we gotta pick the top things that matter.
But we have a process for that. Policy governance committee, the end of the previous, so at the end of this year, the policy governance committee will recommend to the board what is scheduled for next year. It comes up in May and June, a strike. It happens every year. So if we wanna change what we do, we have a way to do it, and it comes up. We typically get very little comment, because I sat up BGC when we put this together last year. We get very little comment from people on what they want or don't want.
Well, I think that's one of the things I'm hoping, is we talked about what's our focus, and it seems to me Lighthouse is supposed to help us sort of say, how do you focus? How do you get there? How do you create your, well, we have a vision, but how do you practice that? And so as I'm seeing, I'm going, okay, March 28th, we're talking about the dates and things, and then we wanna probably April, like, are we gonna get there so that we can hopefully start to make this change as we make this plan this spring for next year?
So, so maybe what we should be thinking about doing is not forgetting this conversation, but tableing it for a little while, because it's not, I don't know that it's productive to talk about how we're doing things right or wrong, when we collectively may decide that we're gonna do some things differently, and at that point, it would make sense to say, how are we gonna do them to be effective and stay on task, et cetera, et cetera?
So when do you bring each one of these kinds of, when do we take all this stuff and bring it to resolution and say, this is our new practice?
Some of that, depending on how much time it takes, I'm, I just got your survey results back, congratulations, you broke the bank. We typically get about 100, 150 results back, we had almost 900 here, and the teachers were very supportive of the survey, and I wanna thank you for that. So I've gotta go through and crunch that data. What I was hoping to do next time, because again, that measures conditions and the beliefs. My goal was to start with the conditions, and because I have the data early enough, instead of doing that as a separate presentation, as we talk about you, the conditions, I can share with you your data at that point. I'm not sure, because you may wanna look at that data, dig a little deeper, that may take a little longer, but it's good stuff, and it's worth doing it if you want to. So I can't pinpoint, next meeting we'll do it all, or whether we'll get, well...
Yeah, whenever you do it, I just was trying to understand your process.
Yeah, the, the survey, the information that Lighthouse indicates of the conditions of success is our next step. And within that, I will be sharing your data, your benchmark data about where you are, not a judgment, you know, it's just, here's where we are, here's some of the things we wanna think about taking steps to improve. Then the second part is when we get into what the research showed the role of the board should be, and we actually developed a worksheet that you can follow as you're looking at different recommendations, that give you the questions to ask, gives you the expectations to have, that's all coming in the next module, whether it's the next session or one of the next two sessions, that's coming next. And in my mind, that's what, that can give you, the start of giving you some really important tools, or really focus, if nothing else, to make, so then it'll all start to make sense, it'll all start to gel.
What was the next one? Was that our session?
April something.
April 11th.
April 11th. And then we've talked about extending that out further, we can work on that as we go along. One of the challenges I have is, when we do this once a month, the stuff's still fresh enough that we can keep going, and going, and going, and we're doing it every other month, we all lose momentum, we lose a little momentum, but as I say, the real meat of what we're doing is the next session or two, and I hope you'll get that and say, wow, this really has helped, give us an idea where we need to go.
So, just looking at the calendar, we have one business meeting in March, nothing else, so if we do need to add a session, March might be a good time for it, so we can talk about that offline later.
Okay, March is fine. I was gonna say, pretty good for me, we could figure something out. Sure, glad to. Especially given it's gonna be the same, it's the same module, and so if we could do it faster, it will make much more sense to you. Happy to do that. So I just wanted to throw a couple of things up, if it's gonna work for me now, after the crash. Just a couple examples of what we're talking about when we talk about student learning and some of the things that influence students. Now, if we look at this chart, this is the blank version, this is gonna be a scattergram, so the data's gonna show as independent points at different spots on this chart. The left-hand side is the percentage of proficiency, so 100% proficiency, this is New York's seventh grade classes, 100% proficiency would be at the top, zero at the bottom, the lower scale is pre-reduced sludge, so zero means the district has zero pre-reduced sludge, the far right, 100%. Now, just an observation, not a test, if you were to look at this and think in your mind, what, okay, you're saying you're gonna see a line, so...
Well, I mean, it's gonna be a scatter, and that would be your...
Right, but there's gonna be a baseline range, and it probably is going to descend from 100% down as we have more and more children on pre-reduced sludge, is that?
I don't know that it would be at 100%, but I would say the general...
General trend, a trend line. Okay, anybody, any other?
Hopefully not to 100%.
Okay, so, yeah, just to give you an idea, and this was from a book called Teach Like a Champion, there is a trend, but there are an awful lot of schools where they did either much better, or in some cases, much worse. If I were a school board member, if I can make my laser work, but if I were, oh, that's right, it's not gonna do it, I'd be wondering about some of these if I were a school board member, like, what's going on? Because we're doing markedly lower than even the trend, and again, if you look at the ones that go well above it, you've got a lot of districts, you know, what they sometimes call 90, 90, 90, you know, 90% pre-reduced, 90% minority, 90% success rate. It just gives pause to the idea that we don't always have excuses that are, that hold water, that if we do the right things, in this case, it's a book with a bunch of teaching strategies, and I'm not selling that, but the fact is, we know how to teach children with various skills and abilities, do we do it or not? So that's just one. I wanna think about third graders for a second. Another study, now this one's getting a little bit older, I think this was probably 15, 20 years ago, but it's a very, it was a very comprehensive study at the time. Just to set this up for you, a group of students who started in third grade through fifth grade, so we're gonna see measurements, awesome, high tech. Spell check work on this one. So we've got proficiency, these children were all challenged children, so they all were at a certain, well, yeah, they're all starting just about the 55th percentile, so they're all in that area. What they were doing was, they were studying both the student performance and the teacher performance, because what they were looking for was a correlation between excellent teaching and student success. So now, assuming for a minute that students had a decent teacher, good quality instruction for two years, third to fourth, fourth to fifth, what would you expect the line to look like if we drew a trend line? And remember, if we stayed exactly the same, we'd be basically flat, because we'd be staying at grade level, we'd be staying exactly where we were. So if we have two years of highly effective teaching, what would we expect to see?
The first one you said decent, and now you're saying highly effective.
Highly effective, I'm sorry, highly effective. Yes, you're right. Sometimes I get lazy, I'm sorry, you're right, highly effective. So we would expect to see, and in fact, a couple of grade lines. So we're seeing some significant change. Now, if the opposite happened, and they had two years of ineffective teaching, exactly.
Looks like the plummet rhythm is faster than the rise.
Little bit, yes. Profound impact, profound impact, and there are lots of studies like this that are really important. Yes.
I think the reason for the plummet is that that is a cumulative knowledge and subject, so if you miss what you need in third grade, you can't use those building blocks for fourth grade, and then you can't use them in fifth grade. So that makes a lot of sense to me, that it's not, what's the word, it's not, it's not symmetrical.
Although, and I would say this, I think if that child had a bad year the first year, but got a high quality teacher the second or third year, that they could reverse that. Good instruction could offset that.
That's good to know.
Yeah, so, and in fact, if we remember Will, our student from last time, because they gave him intensive reading instruction, he went from below the 25th percentile, jumped like, what, two or three grades within a year, within a few months. So, yeah, but it speaks to, if we don't, if we don't change anything, you're right, it compounds itself, but a good teacher could bring that child back up, maybe, not all the way, maybe, but they could help catch them off. And Ralph's nodding, and he's going, okay.
Okay, but let's put it to practice. First year, issues, challenges with the teacher, for whatever reason, doesn't work with that student and that teacher. How does it get identified so that we make sure in the second year, there's a teacher that it's a better situation?
You don't. That's a question you should be asking when we talk about...
We just did. We're having a sad part.
Yeah, no question about that. The sad part of this was, in fairness to the study, they didn't go, we know Mr. Jones is a really terrible teacher, we're gonna test his kids and see how bad they are. It was a mute, it was a dual study, and so the results of the teacher's effectiveness was studied at the same exact time that the students were. So you can't say, well, we gave these kids, you know, it's like, we gave this person the real medicine, this one got the placebo, that wasn't what they did to them.
You're gonna get the message from here, so we still have the data.
Yeah, I would hope, remember, we don't have bad teachers, because you've seen the Tepel results, everything is pretty good. But, but see, that, but as a board, you should be saying, we don't want any of those teachers. That is not, that is not a teacher we would want in our district. Are we evaluating them?
That's the problem, is that the data we get back says that we have no problems, we have no performance problems, or very few, very, very, very.
Well, the challenge is the weight of the system that the state imposed upon us.
So I don't think, if it's not useful to the superintendent, not that the board should see any of that data, but if it's not useful in this situation, we need to do things differently.
Well, it's the principals in the buildings, right, who have to help account for this, and then it's the administrators... So you can't say, well, we gave these kids, you know, it's like, we gave this person the real medicine, this one got the placebo. That wasn't what they did to us.
It might get so much older, you're gonna give the message, share some of these other data.
Yeah. I would hope, remember, we don't have bad teachers, because you've seen the Tepel results, everything is pretty good. But, but see, that, but as a board, you should be saying, we don't want any of those teachers. That is not, that is not a teacher we would want in our district. Are we evaluating them and...
That's the problem. Is that the data we get back says that we have no problems. We have no performance problems, or very few, very, very, very.
Well, the challenge is the weight of the system that the state imposed upon us.
So I don't think, if it's not useful to the superintendent, not that the board should see any of that data, but if it's not useful in this situation, we need to do things differently.
Well, it's the principals in the buildings, right, who have to help account for this. And then it's the administrative staff sitting at this table backing them up so that we don't see that.
But I think broadest picture, the board has to have the mindset that every teacher's gonna be excellent. And again, how do we know? How, you know, what do we, you know, it gets back into, are we providing appropriate development for them? What do we do to make them better, but we are shortchanging the child if they get the one that... I know what hap, I know what happened in our district. The teachers who were probably, maybe they should have retired five years ago, they were, they're struggling to continue their career. Who gets those teachers?
Ralph, Ralph, do you get, do you get, do you get a stack ranking? A stack ranking of all 900 teachers in the system?
No.
Okay, so you don't even get one of those. I, I wanna finish the question, I do do. Do you get, I, I know the building principals know their teachers, but my question was, do we have...
Every year, the superintendent, you know, maybe not every year, but this superintendent looks at the teachers that are up for tenure, and we make a decision whether we're going for it or not.
Yeah, that wasn't my question, my question was...
That's the, that's a bigger issue than...
It is a big issue, of course it's a big issue.
Because we want those highly effective teachers that this article talks about. Because that's the, one of the only options to improve a school district, is the higher quality teachers.
Of course, right. Uh, but we hire how many a year? 15?
18.
18. Okay, so we only hire 10%, which means we have 90%. The other 90%. By the way, that's a great thing. That's, that's the pointy edge of the spear. Terrific. Very good to focus on that. My question is, coming back to this, do we take, because we now have data of the expected growth that every kid should be able to get. Because kids are not, they're not much of nice milk. Right? So we know. Do we know, and it takes, it removes all the variability that teachers are worried about, which is, I got a bad class versus that, that one over there got a great class. Do we stack rank all teachers to see which teachers got the growth anticipated out of the kids and which ones didn't?
Well, if you're talking about how we measure growth to, um, Pepper's, it's, it's almost impossible not to achieve, uh, growth.
Okay.
But whatever our measure, it's almost impossible not to get where you need to make that expected growth. It's not a good measure.
Okay. I, I'd like to sidetrack this conversation a little further down the road too, because we're getting into the weeds a little bit.
Yeah, the point you're making, the concept, the point you're making is, which is why this has to come together. It's great to have this vision conversation, we need really great teachers. Right? It's wonderful to have largely subjective, we have a largely subjective evaluation system. It's done by professionals subjectively evaluated, right? Because this stuff isn't, it's not a factor, right? But when we get over to their results, you actually have to try, you take this concept, right? Which is, I'm gonna have highly effective teachers. Hopefully the board's gonna say, okay, that's one of my cornerstones. And that's what I'm gonna focus on, right? And I'm gonna have lots of conversations with the administration about that. Or we have lots of conversations about how you support the administration to get more effective teachers. Right? And you should have it a lot, and you should have it often, right? Because otherwise, everybody loses focus with bleachers or whatever the heck it was.
Square or Turf.
Turf, or wherever she listed as topics. Right? So, but if you, if you don't follow, the point I'm trying to make is, if you don't follow this thread all the way through, and it's not a part of your DNA, this is a great conversation, but it's, it's fantasy.
That's what I was thinking too about the tile conversation. There's the financial component of how our system works. Because that's all about, um, social, um, or personal, interpersonal and academic. But then there's the whole operation, like the financial part, and then the HR, the human capital, you know, part that we don't look at at all, really. Not in a detailed way, but, you know, I know we want to try to get sort of an HR-ish committee, and that never flew. But we wanna know the health of the organization.
What, boards often have a goal in one way or another that talks about having an effective staff. Uh, the best, the one I enjoyed the most was, I think it was East Gravy. We wanna have East Gravy, we want East Gravy to be a great place to teach. And, I mean, it sounds like a slogan, but they really had a lot of thought into that. Because we want our teachers to feel effective, we want them to be effective, we want them to want to come to work in the morning and feel that they've done a job, you know, a good job. So it, it, but that's simple goal turned into an awful lot of work to ensure that. And again, it's not enough to say we wanna have effective teachers. This is just to give you a couple of examples of what happens if they're not. And I, and I apologize, we sort of sidetracked a bit. But the point is that that is one of your most important jobs. If you take this seriously, is how to ensure that every child has an excellent teacher. And sometimes it's a hard challenge. My stepdaughter went to Wellington, small district, one math teacher in eighth grade. And she failed math. And in fact, she failed math so bad, she stayed back. So she had to do eighth grade over again. Guess who she got for math?
Same teacher.
Because there's only one math teacher in the entire, in the entire school for eighth grade. And she taught the same exact stuff. And of course, in her mind, the kid was already a failure, so she didn't really put a lot of effort in trying to rectify it all. That's not gonna work. But, but if you have metrics and your superintendent and your principals know the teachers, and it's not simple, I've had some board say, well, we'll just fire all the bad ones and all the good ones. Well, that's never gonna happen. But what we can do is find their strengths, play to those, find their weaknesses, help them with those. That's why PD should be an important part of this conversation. Because that's the only way, that's really the way that you would sure quality professional teachers, is not just picking better ones, but helping those mature and get better and feel good about themselves. Because we also know the statistics about teachers that leave within the first five years or more. We don't wanna see that. I'm gonna go through this one very quickly, just because you guys get this. And so another example, we talked, and you will hear an awful lot about, well, if the kids get real good support, they're gonna be really, really well. And if, you know, we can't offset what happens at home. They're at home for all these extra hours, we just have them six hours. It's not our fault that they're not successful. And this study was in Tennessee. And they measured, again, like households. And what they did was, they looked at in terms of home support. Was there a space to do homework? Were there books in the house? Is there allocated time for doing their work? Uh, is the TV, you know, even measuring how much time the TV's on. I mean, they really studied the households to determine whether there was high or low home support. They looked at the quality of instruction. When they talk about high classroom support, they're really talking about high, high instruction versus middle of the road, kind of medium, or low classroom support. Now, the first time, um, as they looked at this, they said, okay, for high home support, if there's quality teaching, 100% of the kids made expected gains. Now, Ralph made a good, important comment about expected gains don't necessarily mean everything. But this is what they looked at, this is what these children should be able to do. 100% made expected gains, with mixed classroom support, 100% of the kids made expected gains. With low classroom support, 60%. So now, if I were to spend the time, I mean, maybe put the, well, I don't know, let's see, I have the clickers there, but I think it didn't start right. If we went back and said, okay, but the home support is low, what would you expect to see? Why don't we just look at it? Time is almost, I'll just show you the results. I'm gonna try and show you the result. So, okay, so, low home support, high, high instruction, still 100%. What would you expect to see for mixed classroom support? Is that number gonna stay the same, 80?
What were your choices, 75?
75, 15, 25. We'll just go through, uh, well, we, once again, we would vote, I've...
Done that, we voted.
Okay. 25%. That classroom support has a pretty big impact. And what do you expect to see for low classroom support?
10.
Oh, 0.
For those of you who said 0, are correct. It's not to say home support isn't important.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't mean that 0, what is it, what is the 0, 0 growth or 0...
0% of students made their expected gains.
Expected gains.
Correct.
It doesn't mean they didn't learn.
Correct.
Right. Not as much as they should have.
What was expected, yes.
Yes.
The target, or whatever that would be. But the point is that good instruction offsets a lot of what we have allowed others to say is not, we, no, it's not perfect. Because there are examples, lots of examples where teachers are still good. But this is, I forget how many, but it was a fairly, when was this done correctly? And it's just one, there are others in support to say data. The point is, we can't make assumptions. And it still goes back to, we have an obligation to provide that high quality teacher to every one of our children. And you can't offset, to some extent, some of the other variables in their lives.
When was this done?
What's that?
When was this study done?
This one was probably, I'm gonna say about 15 years ago. There have been subsequent studies that are similar, but I, I can't quote from them.
Do they show the same thing?
Similar results. There's also one somewhere that was in a very challenged district where home support had more of an impact, I will say that. It's not always perfect, but I would say in a district like yours, your expectation should be more in terms of quality instruction should take care of a lot of this. I think. Last one. If I gave you $500 and you were gonna spend it to be most effective in terms of what you were going to do to help children learn, would you spend that $500 on lowering pupil teacher ratio, increasing teacher salaries, increasing teacher experience with entirely more experienced teachers, or increasing teacher education, professional development?
3. 4.
We're hearing a lot of 4. 3? Okay, 3 and 4. I haven't heard anybody say 1, I like that.
Well, it's only 500 bucks.
Well, yeah, for every 500 though. There's a fairly sizable difference.
I'm serious, I forget where, give it to the press.
Yeah.
But one of the things that's, I think you might have been in this pack there somewhere, you were talking about the impact. But I also wonder, you know, at some point, are you maxing out? Right, I mean, if, if you're already spending $50,000 on, you know, professional development, the next $500 is probably not gonna make that much of a difference, right? If you already have teachers who have...
But if you say for every 500 and you multiply that times a factor of 10, or 20.
So I was just, there was one study here, and you, you do imagine that if it's in a district where, you know, 90% of your teachers are first year to a job, you got a lot more impact to that than if you have, you know, a seasoned, you know, well-running district.
Well, is that a game pick for them?
There was, I think, somewhere near, I think I was reading about it, and I made a note, and I didn't bring it up, that, you know, when you're looking at the impact of an intervention, it does seem to me you're gonna have some, the starting point, your baseline is gonna have some impact on that. So I was saying, for example, spending an extra $500, if you're already spending $50,000 on your teacher development, your teacher, then that 500 is not necessarily gonna have as much of an impact as if you're in a place where, but they weren't doing any, you know? So, so I do think that baseline has some impact.
Let me also qualify this a little bit, because when we talk about professional development, we're not talking about what many of us grew up seeing where we have a day. Maybe we have some speaker come in, they talk for the day, and then they go away and we never hear about it again. There's no follow-up or very limited follow-up. My colleagues that I had working with me on Lighthouse before were retired principals. They always called it drive-by professional development, because it was meaningless. You could spend a whole lot of money on that and get nowhere, and will get nowhere. We're talking about really embedding it very differently so that, for instance, the teacher may learn something from someone, maybe someone coming in, maybe you've trained someone, you sent your trainers out, they get trained, they come back. But where they benefit is when you have someone coming into their classroom and coaching them and working with them. And the principals who really have to get into this too are working with them and saying, what are we learning? You know, doing the walkthroughs and all that. So again, we're talking about a culture change. It isn't more, and it isn't necessarily spending more, it's doing it more effectively. And it's not just about, here's more math to learn, or here's new science. In fact, the new science standards that came out a year or two ago, very little curriculum changed, but the instruction changed a lot. The focus was on how do we teach science rather than what we teach. So as a board, it's more important, not just, I'll give you a perfect example. Danbury, because we did Lighthouse with them, and we were talking about PD. And Bill Glass, who's, you probably all know Bill Glass, Dr. Glass was assistant superintendent there, D. Daniel Gerber. He really is an amazing person. He goes, what do you think, they had a $110 million budget that year. He goes, how much do you think we have in the line item for professional development? And they are known for quality professional development. $10,000.
Why is that?
Because, without, they spent more than $10,000. The line item for PD, which is often a big chunk, because they did more by paying staff to go places or to come in and teach other staff. They developed in-house expertise and then make sure they were doing their job. And so there were other ways of costing out their PD.
So they're spending the money, it's just not in that line.
But, but in most places, it's a separate line item, professional development, $50,000, $100,000, whatever it might be. And it becomes a target of opportunity to, when we're looking to, that's the budget.
They're bigger than us.
But why is the budget on that are...
That was, well, it was about eight years ago.
Okay, that's interesting.
Yeah. But, but...
Don't wanna hear any complaints here.
What you, what, to answer your question, what do you know about Danbury? Danbury is the largest high school in the state, they only have one.
Yeah.
So they're, we're the second largest high school in the state.
That's a, that's a lot.
So, but, and again, not to sidetrack into the, the minutia of it, but the idea is they're providing quality PD, but they are not just saying, here's the chunk of money we're gonna spend. But it's built into the system. And they, they think of it in everything they do. It's part of what they do for instruction and teaching and learning and everything else. So again, if you're looking as a board of how are we going to change the paradigm here? How do we make things different? How do you change the culture so that we can sustain better growth? How can the board be involved in this? Those are some of the questions you have to be talking, you know, asking and answering should go along.
But Nick, the takeaway of this thing, that is, my takeaway from this is, you can go have this conversation about what's most effective practice to do PD. But the bigger takeaway is, uh, improving teacher practice is, is according to this, of these four things, the most important, the most impactful thing you can do. Improving teacher practice. Specific, and not, is this specific to the student, the grade, the subject, and the type of students they have?
What's that?
It's probably universal.
Part of it's universal, I think there may be times when the district has to be more flexible when a child is not working with a teacher properly. Well, first of all, teachers have to figure out that I can't teach one way and hope that every kid learns the way I teach. That they have to be able to teach in a variety of styles to help each child. But when they can't, the district has to be more flexible and say, we see this one's really not worth it, you know? And that's when we get into using professional time for staff. Do they have chances to sit as a team and talk about, you know, little Johnny's having a little trouble? You know what, maybe if we switch into this class, if he's more tactile or whatever, um, he might do better. That all gets back to, are we ensuring each child has quality instruction that is gonna help them? So it's a whole, it's a complex thing. If it was easy, we would have fixed it a long time ago. But it's helping to articulate what the problem is, which makes it a little easier at least to focus on.
So here's the good news. We've actually been going down this path, right? We've, personalized learning has been, it's rolling. Is it everywhere?
No, but it's moving in a direction. So we're going that way. And, and, yeah, this shouldn't be, Nick comes in here and tells you to do everything different. You know, celebrate where you're doing it right, take advantage of that and do more of it, basically. I, I'm gonna call it here, it's, it's, okay, at least in terms of this. And then if you wanna continue the conversation to talk about where we are so far, I'd like some, I'd also like your guidance on this whole thing with the, um, the credibility part. I'm really interested in some feedback on that. Did you feel that helped the conversation at all or not? Because I, it's the first time I've done it. I think it makes sense, but I'm not sure I figured out how to best approach it yet. So I'd love some feedback on that.
I think it's a nice little topic, we're just gonna be here to talk to you.
I do think that, um, if you look at other organizations, disruption is very important. And I do think that if you look at other organizations, disruption is very important, moving organizations forward. And it is not always to be perceived as a negative, in fact, it has taken some organizations to the top of their industries. And you can look at nation-states like Singapore, who have totally disrupted what was expected of a tiny island nation with a single city and no other cities. So I think we have to take off our blinders when it comes to disrupting systems.
Yeah, there's a great book, I don't know if you've read it, Disrupting Class.
What?
Yeah. One of the authors, James Johnson, I believe, and they talk about how, to that point, they point a few examples of business, you know, music used to be, if you wanted to be successful, you had to sell yourself to a record company, they controlled your entire life and handed you a check once a month or whatever, for whatever residuals they let you have, but they made all the money, because they had one team Steve Jobs and digital music, and iPods and all that other stuff. And all of a sudden, anybody and their brother could have a recording studio, now, they still could get out of way monopolizing, but it totally disrupted that industry. Tubes used to be the way we had radios, and when they came out with transistors, that was another example, to me, was just revolutionary, it changed the way we listened to everything. The one that was most appropriate in terms of math, I thought was interesting, because it, you know, we, I was in a generation, I'm sure a lot of people were, where they said, "It's okay if you don't learn math, not that everybody gets it." And I definitely didn't get it, because I didn't learn math the way they taught math. And the problem is, if you are good at learning math, what's your career path? You become a math teacher. So you perpetuate that same belief that some people, if you forget it, some won't. And, but the fact is, I mean, I'm watching my grandson now, learning through the new math stuff, and you know what? It looks crazy to me, I mean, that first time I saw him doing his fingers and doing this, I'm like, "What?"
You have no idea how much you're poking the bear right now.
But that kid has learned math, he has learned math, that's intended to poke the bear, but the fact is, to your point, sometimes you have to control the explosion, but you may need that, and especially in a community like Greenwich, as you've reminded me a couple times, the perception out there of Greenwich being one kind of community isn't necessarily accurate. So you have to sort of maybe shock some people into accepting what the reality is, and that not only doesn't have to change, but it's in the community that's interested in change. Because they could say, "Well, yeah, it's different, I guess we're not gonna do it anymore." But that's not, that's not in the best interest of the community. So, thank you for that observation. So, it doesn't hurt the conversation, then, the discussion about credibility? Did that help?
I think it's an important conversation.
Okay. That may work a little bit more, I'm trying to find a better way to present it, or share it. One last thing I'm gonna ask you, in front of you, the last thing in the package was a little questionnaire, shows a circle, a triangle, and a square. If you would just take a couple minutes, and fill those out, I do use those, it's a feedback sheet, just to give you an idea where we are. Oh, it's right there. Square, right, one or more words, it's square, what are your previous beliefs? Circle, what kind of ideas are still circling around, you have, you have to think about a little more. And then, three things you'd like to know more about, could be one, but, well, that's three. This moves to a adjourn, is there a second? All of us in fifth person? Yeah, I'm fixing it, so, we are adjourned, thank you very much.